Perfect. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of June 10th, 2021. And please note that this meeting will be conducted virtually. All board members, staff, and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identifying the public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raise hand feature in Zoom or by pressing star nine if participating by telephone to indicate that they would like to be recognized to speak. Meeting and application documents have been made available on the township's website through their civic clerk portal in accordance with the public meeting notice. Applicants will be presenting remotely and will identify themselves before testifying. And with that, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of the States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, available on the town at Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to public law 2020 comma C dash C dot 11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to the local finance notices established in state in Jersey. And with that, may I have a roll call of both board members and board and township professionals?
Mr. Hashtag and Mr. Santa Romita are absent. Mr. Emick?
Make your.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Scobo? Mr. Scobo?
Here.
Mr. Pezen?
Can you hear me?
Here. Peace in here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Present.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Hori?
Here.
Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
You. So, um, let's see. I know there was a request by the applicant that's here this evening, or at least his attorney, if he could get through him first. Everyone is, if there's no objections.
Got a lot of men. I don't think he's in yet.
No, he's not in yet. Okay. Alright, so.
I object.
What was that?
I object.
What? You're on mute. We can't hear you. Mr. Rory, are you able to get Mr. Wolfson in?
He's calling me. Yes, Mr. Wolfson.
I don't understand why.
You're getting led in right now.
Mr. Wolfson should be in okay now.
Yeah, I see him. There he is. Good evening, Mr. Wolfson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Eric, I sustain your objection.
Actually, I was outvoted. I had suggested you be heard like late tonight, but I was outvoted. So.
I appreciate that very much.
Don't worry. So I just, just for the record and for the.
Is anyone, is anyone else in the public here, Ken, other than Mr. Wolfson?
I mean, there were a few people out there, but.
Let them in.
We'll get to that in just a moment. So just, so we're going out of order. We're going right to applications. JSM at Hillsborough LLC filed 20 dash PB dash zero nine dash MSPV. It's not actually hearing tonight. It's the applicant's requesting for.
Well, I think, I think you should read the entire.
I read the entire. Okay, we'll do that.
Block 155.01, lot 66 and lot 67, formerly block 155, lot 66 and 67, 309 Route 206 in vacant land, Andrea Avenue, applicant seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, seat bulk variances and waivers to merge lots 66 and 67 to construct a mixed-use development consisting of three-story, one-or-an-18-unit multifamily building to the rear of the site, the lot 66 portion, and renovate two existing commercial buildings and construct a drive-through restaurant in the front portion of the property, lot 67 portion with associated parking, lighting, landscaping, utilities, stormwater, and improvements on property in the mixed-use inclusionary overlay district within the GA Gateway A Zone and in the ASD Architectural and Site Design Overlay District. This has been renoticed as per the request of the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The members of the board, thank you very much for letting me in despite Eric's objection. I appreciate that very much. This is how our friends treat one another. It's okay. So as the board knows, when I appeared last time asking for the request to adjournment, the board thought it was in the best interest of the public that we renoticed because a substantial period of time, several months at least, maybe five, had lapsed between the original application and the hearing date. In accordance with that request, we in fact renoticed, republished, and reserved everybody within the 200-foot tax list of tonight's hearing. We were hoping, of course, that we'd be ready to be heard tonight. They are still working on the plans. Everybody seems to be crazed with the amount of work that's going on elsewhere and this in other municipalities. So unfortunately, we're not prepared to proceed tonight. We would request respectfully that you carry us to the, I guess it's the July 8th meeting. Because I doubt we could get finished in time for the later June meeting. Plus, you may already be, you know, locked up for that meeting as well. So that is our formal request, Mr. Chairman, that the board allow us to adjourn without additional notice since we just noticed to allow us to be heard on the June, I'm sorry, the July 8th meeting.
Okay. And just so that you know, Mr. Wilson, that we are going back to in-person meetings beginning in July?
I'm not sure Eric could stand me showing up, but I'm happy to come.
Okay, that's assuming I show up.
Alright, so that is an in-person meeting. I will alert, assuming the board grants that request, I will certainly alert all of our consultant witnesses that it will be in person.
Yes, Chairman, if I may, yeah, it's important to note that there will be no remote participation at the July meetings, either July 1st or July 8th. And perhaps we should get some assurance from the applicant that they will have their revised plans to us 10 days prior to that meeting. Because this will be the only application on that night. And as I mentioned, everybody has to come to the building.
I wish I could give you the assurance, but since I'm not drawing those plans.
Well, this is the fourth adjournment, and everybody's at home. It's different. If everybody has to come to the building and there's another adjournment, I'll leave that up to the board to decide.
I mean, I can't, I can't give you an assurance because I'm not drafting those plans, but it is our intention. Every day we wait costs us money as well. So it's not like we don't want to get there.
But this has been carried since December.
Yeah. Well, you may remember, Mr. Maskey, that the board and the members had serious questions about various things that were being proposed that caused what I will describe as significant amendments and changes in order to accommodate some of those frankly very good requests and changes. So between that and then the ownership having to change unit styles based upon the redesigned plans, things take very long. So like I said, we're not looking to slow this down. We're looking to get in and do this. But I'm, you know, it'd be very easy for me, Mr. Chairman, to say, oh, yes, we'll do that. But no, I have my reputation and my integrity. I'm not going to promise something that I don't control. But we have every intention of, and I believe based on what I'm told, that we will be ready to go on that date. And I recognize that if we don't show up and you don't have a meeting, then we have to renotice again. And that, of course, is, you know, you know, pain for us as well. So we have many incentives to make sure we try to get this in on time. And I appreciate Mr. Maskey's comment. We take them seriously.
Well, Mr. Wilson, I think the, the issue was, and I'm sorry, this is Frank Delkor. From, from Mr. Maskey's perspective, if can we, I think we can agree that if we don't have the plans in, within that 10-day window, that we will not have, have the meeting so that we're not, we're not taking that to the, to the 11th hour. We should have the plan to review that.
Understood, understood. The board has its rules. The MLU has rules. We need to comply with them. And if we don't, we suffer the consequences.
So what would be 10 days? Is that going to be June?
28.
June 28.
June 28th, so.
Which is a Monday.
Okay. So if they're not in by the end of business on the 28th, I will also, and I know this would be a separate motion, Eric, that the board would, you know, allow me to cancel that meeting?
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, we will probably be having a meeting on July 1st, so.
Well, that's why we're talking about the 18th.
Right. Well, the point is on the, of course, you can cancel the 8th.
That's true, too. Okay.
Because you'll know by then whether or not Mr. Wilson's clients' plans are in.
Okay. Actually, I'm seeing some hands being raised in the, out in the lobby there. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to open the public. I see the mayor is a ventriloquist. I see lips moving, but no.
So moved. Yes, sir.
Second.
Second piece.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so if we can let the first person, Sandra Allen?
Okay, Sandra Allen is allowed to talk.
I know. Um.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please? Sorry.
Sandra Allen, 453 Brookside Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I had submitted some question, but obviously with the adjournment, well, they'll wait. But I would sort of like to request that we continue with the Zoom because a number of us no longer drive at night. And if we get to the meeting and it gets dark, we can't go home. This is for all future meetings, not just this one. I'd like to take it under consideration.
Yeah, I think the township committee will be, you know, would need to be making those calls because there are logistical and, and obviously expenses to try to keep, do both live and.
Oh, I'm not, I, I'm not bringing it up for an argument. I am.
No, 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 yeah. No, no, I'm just, I, I'm not the one that would be in position to, to make that final decision, but it is noted. But it is noted.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, no, thank you. Okay, so it looks like we have Susan Golliford in the lobby. Let her in.
Hi, Susan Golliford, Hunt Club Road. I saw the revised site plan of May 27th, 2021 online. It sounds like there's more revisions in progress, but a lot of it is very technical for those of us who aren't engineers or whatever. Will a summary of the revisions, maybe another planning memo be posted for the public so that we can understand what types of changes are coming up in the future?
If we get it with enough time, we will issue a supplemental report. Yes.
Okay, thank you. It was just very hard to understand. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to ask Ms. Wolfson any questions, please raise your virtual hand and, or press star nine. And I see hand up next to one of the numbers. Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also Hillsborough Township Property Owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camp Lane Road. I just want to be sure that I've got the information correct. There's, there will be no renotice for the, for the, for the next meeting?
We haven't taken that up yet, but I think that was the request.
That's the request. That's correct. It's up to the board.
That's the, the request for what? To not have to renotice?
Correct.
Okay. And what is it? What is the date, the date planned, the July 8th?
That's the proposed date, but we still have to vote on that.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all for now. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any additional members in the public that would like to comment or question the applicant? Okay, I see none. So I will make a motion to close? Or ask for a motion to close?
So move. Motion. Scobo will make the motion.
Second piece.
So all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So any additional comments, questions from any of the board members? Okay, a few head shakes. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting or adjourn the meeting, yeah.
Not yet.
During the, the application till, to the July 8th, 2021 meeting without renotice.
Scobo will make that motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Scobo will make that. I don't know if you hear me or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we hear you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank.
We need, we need a second.
Wagner will second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you very much. I'm going to tell Eric I'm putting this in the one-loss column on the one side.
Alright.
Today, we'll see you on the 8th in person.
Excellent. Enjoy the 4th.
Thank you so much as well.
Thank you. So just for the members of the public, this application is now scheduled to return on July 8th, 2021. And there will not be any additional notifications for that meeting. Okay. So with that, we'll go back to the original order. Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in for a second? As far as the public is concerned, they should pay attention to the July 1st meeting in the event that the July 8th meeting gets canceled. So they should check in either that night or with the planning office to see what has happened on July 1st. Okay, thank you. Good point. Okay, so going back to the original order of the agenda, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration. First up is the minutes of the April 22nd, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Scobo.
Thank you.
Can't, you can't, Ron. You weren't there.
Thank you. I'm sure. Appreciate it.
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll second it. Thank you.
Who's second?
Vice Chair.
Okay, yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
You're going to go through the list, Michael, of who's eligible?
Sure. We have Mr. Emick, Mr. Wagner, Deputy Mayor Delkor, Mayor Lepani, Vice Chair Julian, and Chair Sarachi.
Thank you.
Okay. No questions, no comments. Roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
Do we call Mr. Wagner?
We did.
Okay, just checking. I didn't think I heard him. He said, he's, he's sitting there doing his Ron Scobo imitation.
Is it any better now?
Better now. Thank you, Ron. Just checking.
All right, next up, the May 13th, 2021 meeting minutes. And you want to go through who's eligible?
Sure. Yeah, we have Mr. Emick, Mr. Chicorelli, Mr. Pezen, Deputy Mayor Delkor, Mayor Lepani, and Chair Sarachi.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, Pezen.
Second, Chicorelli.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, seen, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay, and now we have a couple of resolutions. First one is the Greek care, Green Care Farms LLC. File number 19 dash PB dash 21 dash SV, that's extension for time of decision. May I have a motion?
And that one, you have Mr. Chicorelli, Mr. Scobo, Mr. Pezen, Mr. Wagner, Mayor Lepani, Vice Chair Julian, and Chair Sarachi.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
So moved, Pezen.
Wagner, second. Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next up is the Sun Power Corporation, otherwise known as the Comcast Cable Application. File number's 20 dash PB dash zero two dash SPV. And who's eligible for this?
For this one, we have Mr. Emick, Mr. Chicorelli, Mr. Scobo, Mr. Pezen, Mr. Wagner, Mayor Lepani, Vice Chair Julian, Chair Sarachi.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Pezen, so moved.
Wagner, second.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, comments? Any roll call, please?
Mr. Emick?
Emick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. So we do not have any planning board business nor consideration of ordinances. So we'll now open it from business from the floor for matters on the agenda, but we pretty much went through the agenda. So if anyone in the public that would like to provide any comments to the board, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. Oh, there is a taker.
Hello?
Just state your name and, and the address for the record again, please.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I just wanted to comment that when the JSM application entire thing was being read, and I don't know if that, I couldn't tell, it was, if that was Attorney Bernstein. I noted that there was a, the, the address was given as 309 Route 206, but on the, on the agenda, it shows here 390 Route 206, so which is correct, 309 or 390?
390.
390? Okay, all right, because yeah, I heard, I heard it read as 3309. My question is in regard to the property Block 86, Lot 21, property that's known as the Sherman tract, and now it's two separate lots. Has that property been sold yet by the township?
Board wouldn't know. It's not within the purview of the planning board to know the answer.
Okay, so who would know the answer? The township committee?
Committee.
Township committee. Okay, well, I know that the mayor is there and so possibly he, he can say whether it is or not.
As far as I understand now, it has not been completely transferred at this time.
It hasn't been transferred, was it? So wasn't, it was not sold yet?
Not completely, no. Not, it's not going to be transferred until everything is done. So it's not sold as, as you would consider sold, I guess, if that, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, yeah, because it was supposed to be sold from the township to the developer. So that's what I'm asking, if it's been sold to the developer yet?
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't been finished yet.
Okay. Now, in regard to the, today's resolutions, the public doesn't have a chance to ask questions on that because I wanted to find out what's, how much extension time has been given for this Green Care Farms LLC?
Should be in the resolution.
I don't have a copy of the resolution. I have the office today.
Through September 20.
I'm sorry, what?
Through September 28th, 2021.
September 28th, 2021. And has this had previous extensions?
Yes.
An agenda item, or we're not on agenda stuff.
Okay, well, not, not, this is an agenda item, but there was no public, public time to speak or ask questions in regard to it.
Correct.
Mr. Maskey, correct me if I'm wrong, but the public has access to this material online?
Let's say the clerk, yes.
Let's say the clerk.
So.
Okay, I came, I went, I went into the planning department this afternoon and I asked for a copy of it and I was told that the public doesn't get a copy until after it's, after these resolutions are approved. So I was there in person and I was not given a copy. So I don't know what's in these resolutions.
Hang on, Mr. Maskey.
I'm asking questions. So I'd like to know how many, how many, how many previous extensions were given to Green Care Farms LLC?
We would have to look that up.
All right. But again, the, yeah, for that part, but again, yeah, everything's available online.
I believe, I believe at least one other.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I believe at least one other extension.
There had been at least, at least one. Okay. Now, in regard to the Sun Power Corporation Comcast cable?
We're not doing this. Sorry.
Yeah, well, you can't ask questions because this is new business that's not on the agenda. That was on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, but as I said.
You wouldn't have that question then either during that hearing. So.
During what hearing?
During, during when we, when we did the extension. So what is the question you have that's not on those, on those topics? Do you have anything that's not on those topics?
So, so my question is, when you do present consideration of resolutions, the public has, has not given an opportunity for any, any input or any questions?
Correct. Correct, because the, the input happened during the hearings. This is just a summary of.
Memorialization.
Memorialization of what happened.
Right. So it's really up to the board members just to ensure the accuracy of that, but as far as any of the actual content and discussions of that, that, that time has already occurred.
Previous meetings.
All right. So, so these resolutions with the approval on them will be available soon?
No. Mr. Maskey, how soon do they get up?
As they get signed.
Right, which that means me and Mr. Hashtag, so.
Okay, so that should be like within a couple of days, right?
It might be a week or so.
Mr. Hashtag is on vacation, so he won't be back for at least 10 days. So.
I, I don't get into the building on, only on, usually the late nights, Tuesday nights to sign.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, see, none. So just before we get to adjournment, just a reminder, we do have it listed on the calendar, June 24th, business meeting. Mr. Maskey, do we need that meeting?
No, we have nothing on at the moment.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to cancel the June 24th, 2021 business meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that to cancel the meeting.
Thank you. I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Comments? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. The June 24th, 2021 business meeting is now canceled. We do have a July 1st meeting, which we do have that agenda. Well, not that we have the agenda, but we have items on the agenda.
Yes, we do. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for a motion to authorize an executive session for this meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to authorize or add an executive session to the July first meeting.
I make that motion.
Thank you.
It'll be at the beginning.
Is there a second?
Wagner, second.
Okay. So we will. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so so we will be adding an executive session to the start of the meeting. So I guess once we open the meeting, we will then, yeah.
We'll go into executive session and I'll I'll ask Mr. Maskey's office to ensure that notice of such has been given.
Okay.
Of course, that will be in person.
That will be in person, so.
Means need to clean up the conference room for us.
No, actually, I'm probably going to ask you all to stay in the main room.
We'll kick out public.
Okay, and with that, we do have a July eighth meeting, but as you heard, that is. Tentative for. Will be contingent on ASM providing us with their documents by July or by June twenty eighth.
Mr. Chairman, I anticipate there will be one or more resolutions on for July one.
Okay.
So if there is going to be an issue with people being unavailable, would you please let Ms. Paget know so we can make sure we have a quorum?
Okay. Noted. So with that. I'm saying a motion for adjournment then.
So moved.
Oh, man, everyone woke up. I'll let Michael sort sort that one out. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of June. We'll see you on July first. Thank you.
Good.
Bye. Bye, Eric.
Bye, all.